Okay, it's six o'clock. Called a special meeting of the EDA. Call the meeting in order. Do we have a forum here this evening? I have an addition to the agenda and that would be under B, Business Subsidy. I would like to add to that a resolution 2017-05. So with that recommendation, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gerbi, second by Mr. Rainett. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Approval of minutes. If you have any chance to read them, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve January 23rd and the February 17th, EDA minutes. Is there any questions or comments on those minutes? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. I will now open the public hearing and first of all, accepting some information regarding the public hearing and then after that, people will be allowed to speak for or against it and that will be limited to two minutes. And when you come up to speak, please come up to the podium, give us your name and address and then we'll give you the two minutes. As we're asking for questions or if the presenters that are originally presenting about the project, ask if there are any questions. Questions are for people at this table. So with that, who's going to be doing the speaking? Cheryl Anderson.
Cheryl Anderson from Community Development. I'm here to introduce Eric Demmerly from Wabash National Corporation. We've been working with the company for a good four months, I think. We knew back in late summer that there was a possibility that Larson Boats was going to be moving to Wisconsin and because of that, Wabash found that the location here, the workers and the facility itself landed itself very well to what they wanted to do. So we were trying to, one of the things they really wanted was job training funds because this is in the process. And so I've been working with the state of Minnesota and Minnesota SEP, they run the displaced worker program. We wanted to get everyone signed up over at Larson's and they had 85 to 90 people now signed up. So we are continuing to work with the company, that's why we're here tonight, are applying for an Minnesota investment fund forgivable loan for the company in the amount of $400,000. And there will be other job training money coming through directly from the state from the displaced worker program. With that, I would like to introduce Eric Demmerly and he's going to tell you something about the company and why they wanted to come and work.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I want to thank the EDA for inviting me tonight to speak on behalf of Wabash National. Again, I want to express that we, how excited the company is to come to Little Falls and start this new process for the new product that they were putting out there. And expressed to you one of the reasons, some of the reasons why we chose Little Falls. Two reasons really primary to it is number one, the facility itself, Larson Boat Facility lent itself to the process that we're going to be using with this new proprietary product. And the workforce as well has some background in the same type of process that we'll be using to do, to produce our product. Our product's not boats. It's semi-trailers and truck bodies and the things that we'll produce, producing that here will be refrigerated, 53 hood vans and truck bodies. And what we're doing initially was just the panels, but let me tell you a little bit about Wabash National to start off. We were founded in 1985. Company was very small, started out with a couple of people in sight and they just wanted to make a living for themselves and so they rented at least a factory down in Lafayette, Indiana where we're still located at and started making trailers one at a time. We now, we're now up to, in 2015, we produced 64,700 trailers in that facility and we employ worldwide over 6,000 people. Company has $2 billion of revenue and we are listed on the New York Stock Exchange under the sector WNC. As I said, we're headquartered in Lafayette, Indiana, but we have 12 manufacturing locations in three different countries, in the U.S., the United Kingdom, and Mexico. We make a variety of different products. Main, the majority of our product is semi-trailers, truck bodies, refrigerated trailers, flat bed trailers, and also tanker trailers. So we're very deep into the logistics, transportation industry. We also have some other businesses that we do. We have retail stores, Lebanon, nationwide. And we also have two other product lines that really aren't transportation related, but more manufacturing related to what we do well and that's fabrication. One is to make silos for food industry. The other is we make pharmaceutical and medical supplies down towards those clean rooms, that type of thing. So we do that here in the U.S. and in the U.K. as well. We're a Fortune 1000 company and in 19, in 2006, '13, '15, and '16, we were in the best in U.S. manufacturers from Industry Week, in Industry Magazine. So let me tell you a little bit more about what our plans are here at the Larson Boat Facility here in town. Our capital investment for 2017 will be $9 million, which includes the purchase of the property and then about $5.5 million worth of improvements to the buildings. We plan on having 71 employees right away and 53 by the end of the year. We hope to have by the end of next year, about 70 employees and with hopes of expanding that further through the years. In 2018, we are planning to vertically integrate our manufacturing. In other words, the first part of this, the phase one, if you will, of what we're going to be doing is making the panels themselves that we will then assemble initially down in Lafayette, Indiana and then subsequently we'll set up the assembly plant here to actually manufacture the complete semi-van or truck body up here. So we need the time, of course, to set up all of those, all those different types of processes that need to happen. As I said, the facility is unique in that it lends itself very well to what we're going to be doing and right now, obviously, they use a lot of machinery to make boat hulls. We're going to be adapting that equipment to make panels that are 53 feet long when we get to the point of making some research. The product that we're making is proprietary. We're the only ones in the industry that have started making the refrigerated trailers this way. We have great hopes for this product. It's 25% more thermal than the standard refrigerated trailer, 16% lighter. So that helps in two ways. Number one, you can haul more in it because it's light, because the trailer itself is lighter and there's a maximum amount of weight the trailer may have on it. And because it's 25% more thermal, it's a lower cost alternative to logistics, not a shop rate. Not only savings through less refrigeration in the unit, but also because it's lighter, less fuel to take to pull down the roads. Any questions for me? As you guys improve your operation up here, you want to move and move away to Little Falls. Are you still going to be building the running gears of the trailers elsewhere or are you going to manufacture that? No, the idea, in fact, one of the improvements that we're going to do right away is build a bogie pit, we call it bogie pit. The bogies are the rear axles on the trailers. We're going to build bogie pit. It doesn't exist out there now, obviously. But we're going to build bogie pits. So that's part of the, one of the things we're going to have to do and that's why we can't do the assembly right away. No, we'll build everything up here, all the way from the bogies all the way to the landing gear and the kingpence will all be manufactured up here.
Awesome. That's even considered long or manufactured.
Yeah. And there's enough land and buildings out there that we can expand into those and make that process work. So the layout's really good and we're up to what we want to do.
You're just going to be assembling that stuff?
Oh, no, no, no. The bogies, that'll fabricate here, which is normal, but no, we won't be doing that thing. We typically buy most of our castings anyway and then most of the bogie parts are brought in tired rims and axles and so on. And then we do have an assembly line that actually puts them together. So one of the other things I wanted to mention too, the benefits we've been offering for the employees, the wages are between 15 and $21 an hour. There's some salary, obviously some salary people included in that. We have health, vision, dental, medical. We also have a 401K match that is one of the best in the industry. We also have paid life insurance, paid vacations, paid health. So I think our benefit package we've been offering the employees is really, really quite good. Any other questions? Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's David Grauman with David Grauman Associates and I'm lucky enough to be your finance advisor. Part of the deal here is Wabash has asked both the city and the county to consider in the early years of this development, rebating the current level of property taxes that the Larson Boats Facility pays into the system. At the city level, that's about 50 grand a year. At the county level, that's about 40 grand a year. We just came from a public hearing with the Real Development Finance Authority. It's doing this piece on behalf of the county and they approved a business subsidy, 40 grand a year toward this development. We're here to talk about two pieces, mainly the potential to rebate the city share of property taxes. Their request is to rebate the current level of tax, which in round numbers is 50 grand a year, and to do that over the next 10 years. As long as they buy facility, operate it, pay their property taxes, and meet employment retention or new employment targets. If they do that, they'd like us to continue to rebate property taxes at our current level. So 50 grand over 10 years, that potentially adds up to $50,000 a year. State law says when we directly or indirectly provide assistance to a full property company that exceeds $150,000, the state calls that a business subsidy and it requires us to have a public hearing. So that's why we're here, that's one of the reasons this is the public hearing that is necessary to approve that business subsidy. The city is also sponsoring a Minnesota investment fund application. I believe the dollar amount of that is hopefully 400 grand and that won't flow through the city and the EDA. So if you add the two pieces, the property tax rebate of a half million dollars and a $400,000 grant to the city loan to the company, MIF program, we're potentially talking 900,000. So we're well above $150,000 for this whole, this process. The way the deal would likely be done is that the, our DFA and the county would take a look at the 40 grand they've been contributing each year, they'd provide that to the city's EDA, and we'd administer the whole program back to the company. Obviously, this is going to require a development agreement to work on all the details, but the important terms are, we'll rebate 50 grand a year to them for 10 years. If we get a MIF grant approved from them, we'll flow it through them as a forgivable loan. They have to agree to establish employment targets and I think we're talking something like initial, do we know we're talking about 70? 70 jobs, which is what they might have accomplished in the first year. Excuse me, two years. And as long as they meet those obligations, we'll continue to do that. The action for the EDA, after you solicit a public input, to move this process forward would be to pass a resolution basically approving the business subsidy in those basic terms and authorizing the share tax to good development agreement that will contain all of the other needs.
David, with the state MIF funds, there's job targets with those as well. So they, there's reporting that we'll have to also submit to the state.
Yes, that's right. Not bad, but you'll be collecting and be doing that for a few of the early years.
So ideally, within those first couple of years, we'll be submitting the state job retention goals or creation goals and we'll mirror our subsidy language for the job creation and retention with those goals.
Yes, so from the company's perspective, they gotta live by one set of consistent rules. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, would anybody like to speak for or against?
Yes, I would. I'm not going to go up there because it's your last hearing here, public hearing on January 17th. You allowed numerous people to speak from within the audience and I also am disabled. I oppose this huge grant and make no mistake, this is corporate welfare. It's a handout. I oppose this for a number of reasons. Number one is that they have recent violations of the Clean Air Act. 2015 and 2016, they racked up 33,750 in 2015 of penalties and in 2016, they racked up 68,750 for releasing known carcinogens into the air. So we're going to be giving not just 400,000 in an economic corporate handout to this company, we're also going to be giving out in 10 years, $400,000, we're going to give them back their taxes and five, that's from the county, and 500,000, a half a million from the city. So in essence, we're talking already about a million and a half and there's probably more that's in this documentation that I haven't found yet. They also racked up between 2011 and 2013, worker safety violations. So they're gonna, we're paying for a known polluter and a known work safety violator. We're giving them this huge incentive to come to our town to abuse our workers and pollute our air. And this facility sits directly on the Mississippi, if I might add. Their total civil penalties have totaled to date, between 2011 and 2016, 229,192. Some of the known carcinogens that have been spewed into the air are chlorodifluoromethane, chromium, cobalt, which is cancer causing, copper, dionates, manganese, methyl, mercury, lead, nickel, sulfur dioxide, ammonia, chromium three, excuse me, chromium six, nitrogen oxides, tuleine, xylene, arsenic, formaldehyde, nickel, chromium, manganese, carbon monoxide, chromium three, nickel, cobalt, lead, mercury, volatile organic compounds, xylene, benzene, cadmium, hexane, manganese, and napthaleen.
May I speak next?
Yes, you may.
A 2004 study by the University of
Teresa Amen, address please.
Oh, of course. Teresa Scorsese. I now live at 209 First Avenue Southeast, apartment 105. A 2004 study by the University of Iowa Regional Planning Professors found that economic development subsidies didn't seem to create jobs or provide fiscal benefits to states. If the state funds locally targeted incentives, and I'm quoting now, "The state is merely spending money to move taxpaying firms from one place to another. Once again, the local fiscal effects cancel out, but now the entire incentive cost is a state loss." So I'm concerned about a number of things. The Wabash Company comes with a pretty high risk. A dozen or so corrosive and toxic pollutants they'd like to share with us in our air, possibly our river and groundwater. An unregulated, unsafe shop where the lucky 70 new employees get to risk limb and life for a paycheck. In the past couple of decades, we've seen corporations, large and small, trade integrity for profit. They thumb their noses at the Environmental Protection Agency because they can. It's cheaper to pay a fine than to handle chemicals safely. It's cheaper to settle a few lawsuits than to bring their factory floors up to OSHA standards. Over the years, Wabash has paid nearly a quarter million dollars in fines and settlements as recently as last year, 2016. They're regarding it apparently as a cost of doing business. Now we're stewards of the great river, the Mississippi, at least our piece of it, and if we welcome Wabash Industries with their filthy record, we not only betray the residents of Little Falls, we collude in the dirtying of the great river from here to the Gulf of Mexico. So it's up to you, Mr. Mayor and council members, to research this company and to make the right decision for us, for our southern neighbors, and for history. Thank you.
Anybody else raise your hand and I can call on you? Anybody else wish to speak? Yes. Please. Ready?
Steve Andrews, 1614 First Avenue Northeast. I'm actually here today on behalf of the Little Falls Chamber of Commerce. The Little Falls Area Chamber of Commerce supports the funding for Wabash National Corporation. With the boating industry now history here in Morrison County, we feel a replacement industry is needed to keep jobs local. With the financial support for Wabash, the community will be stabilized and poised for future growth with this new industry. The economic impact of securing this new business in Little Falls will be felt on Main Street and throughout Morrison County. If there are no jobs, the ripple effect will be hard to absorb after many years of economic stagnation. With the standard rule of thumb being that every dollar that's spent gets recirculated seven times, it's essential that we keep our retailers and service providers open for business. We need to keep our families here in their homes and our students in our schools. The potential for 100-plus jobs in our community that this funding will provide will generate an economic influx that will be felt not only in cash registers, but also in morale. We're here as community, we are a community of workers, people who take pride in a job well done. By approving this funding, we will be helping to regain the work ethic of our residents. Morrison County faces a significant challenge in the development of jobs that will support families. Please approve this funding as a means of supporting not only our current generation, but also generations to come. The chamber is committed to our continued assistance in economic development efforts. Most specifically, we are very interested and committed to the success of bringing Wabash to Little Falls. Thanks.
Anyone else?
My name is Tom Shirley. I'm here representing Community Development, been at Larson Boats Falls for 35 years, real estate business. When opportunity knocks, we need to answer the door and this company brings to us just a whole lot of opportunity that we've never had before. This company is going to bring us 12 months of years positions that are not, it's not going to be run by a disposable income. It's going to be a business that's going to be ongoing. It's going to be something that's going to allow people to have full-time jobs that they can look forward to. Having served on the Community Development Board of the last 25 years, we get a lot of companies that want to come into this community that are small companies. Like everyone always says, why don't we get big manufacturers? Why don't we get big employers? Well, they don't always come here for a lot of reasons, but right now we have a knocking at our door and it's imperative that we listen to what they have to say and welcome them with open arms. So I trust that we, the folks on this EDA committee, will make the best decision you can that will help us all in our community. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes.
I'm Susie Prisappio. I live at 10139 Hope and Road, Little Falls, and I am the business owner. I own the shops of Little Falls downtown. And as a downtown business owner, having a vital community for their strong employment is critical to keeping our main street alive. So I just would urge you to approve the funding so that we can have our strong jobs and keep our strong downtown. Thank you.
My name is Doug Dolberg. I live at 18023 Riverwood Drive. I am not representing any organization other than myself and my family, so however, as somebody who's involved in the community, I would also echo the sentiments of those behind me that I think bringing Wabash to town is a huge opportunity for this, for this community as we've had manufacturers leaving previously and have heard the cries of people in manufacturing jobs that they can't find them. I think this is a fantastic opportunity and I would urge the EDA as well to move forward with this. Thank you.
I'm Mike Bargans, 301 Little Street, Southeast, Little Falls. My question would be, can you tell me what kind of ventilation and what kind of, first of whatever you have to clean your chumneys and stuff coming out of the chemicals, what have you, be released in the air? Okay, if you're up here telling me what you guys are going to do to go and keep it out of the air, there's ain't studies been done with this. You'll saw when and how long ago. The crap that comes out of there is the same thoughts of stuff we went into mountain. Same downings, exact all drugs, a lot of them, stay on the ground. What kind of clean system they have? When they do the corn plant out here, Epsom, when they scrub the chumneys, we get all their junk from the ash when they clean the chumneys. It comes right down there where I live at the park. It's all dead area. It drops. So any dead area you're going to have around here, the stuff coming out of the company is going to drop. So unless somebody hasn't done their research on ventilation, the cleaners and what have you, I'm all for jobs. God, yeah, people need to live. They need to make money. But let's do it the safe way. If you're one of those blind, you're going to know there's people like me who do a lot of research. Long year does not surprise you because we have brains. Do your research.
Mr. Mike, what was your last name?
Hawke. H-A-W-K-I-N-S.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
May I have another turn? I just have a very, very brief thing to read. Again, Teresa Scorsese, 209 First Avenue Southeast. The Minnesota Investment Fund, which funnels
I don't believe that, I believe it's mine.
I'm sorry. Actually, your policy states differently. It states not to exceed two times the maximum of two appearances.
Okay, my understanding was different than that, but probably a Teresa, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, Greg. The Minnesota Investment Fund, which funnels state funds into cities, counties, townships, and tribes to expand businesses or retain workers in industrial manufacturing and technology fields, accounted for $8.1 million in subsidies between 2005 and 2013. thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen. Minnesota and local units of government within its borders spent an average of at least two hundred and thirty-nine million dollars, or forty-five dollars per person, on subsidies each year, according to a fifty-state investigation by the New York Times. The lion's share of Minnesota's government subsidies, eighty percent of the dollars in subsidy tracker entries," this is their website, "between two thousand and five and two thousand and thirteen, went toward a few giant economic development deals, some of which have multiple sources. This type of subsidy is specifically tailored to help businesses expand or relocate in a given spot. Economic development subsidies tend to be popular with public officials who can trumpet returns in the initial investment in the form of an expanded tax base and the creation of jobs, but experts say if you zoom out, they often create more neutrals and negatives than positives. Arthur Rolnick, former senior vice president of the Federal Reserve Bank of Minneapolis and a senior fellow at the Humphrey School of Public Affairs, criticized subsidy's tendency to create bidding wars between localities and states. It's not uncommon for established businesses to threaten to move to another city or state because of a sweet subsidy deal." So I just wanted to point out that Lafayette and Indiana's loss, Little Falls' gain, somebody else's loss, somebody else's gain, it's just moving stuff around. It's not really progress, it's just motion. Thank you.
Okay, I have a letter here that we take at public hearings. Dear Mr. Zilka and EDA Board, this is a letter in regards to the economic development plan organized for Wabash Industries and their future plans at the old Larson-Voltz plant in Little Falls. Representing the medical community, including CHI St. Gabriel's, Family Medical Center, and Little Falls Orthopedics, I would like to express our support for the plans for Wabash Corporation. I've spoken personally to Lee Boyle, CEO of CHI St. Gabriel's, and Tracy Van Harkey, the administrator of Little Falls Orthopedics, and they also list to express their support for the future growth of jobs in our community and the city's efforts in that regard. The medical community understands the needs for job growth in this area and is prepared to help future employees of Wabash Corporation and their medical needs in the community. Sincerely, Philip L. Prosapio, M.D. Okay? Anybody else wish to speak?
Yes, I certainly would.
Right.
Interesting, tonight in the public packet, which is laying right here on the counter, Phoenix Plastics, another failed business, who got a lot of taxpayer dollars, is listed right there. It says, "Lori Casella, finance officer, informed the board that Phoenix Plastics had paid one of their loans in full. Proceeds of the loan payoff were shared with community development and initiative foundation per the inter-creditor agreement." So we still don't know how many dollars were lost. I think it was about forty-fourth grand, the city taxpayers took a hit. I'm not positive about that, but that's what it was originally. This is a comment submitted by Ray Scoach. "A note to Republicans, a primary reason why there's no centralized reliable reporting of business subsidies in Minnesota or anywhere is that businesses, and especially local chambers of commerce operatives, would prefer that the public remain in the dark about how much they're paying out of what is figuratively their back pocket to attract or keep a business for which they're already paying from their checking accounts or from more obvious sources of tax dollars. The mention of infrastructure, streets, water, sewer, power, that might need to be added or more accurately, that a business might want to be added in order to accommodate the business being subsidized is worthwhile, as that infrastructure constitutes yet another subsidy and one that usually goes unmentioned in city council meetings. If you're providing one point two billion in financial aid to businesses, and you are, it's only prudent to find out where and how that money is being spent and to hold the public and private agencies responsible for that spending." And I also want to mention that the letter that was sent in that the mayor just read is Susie Prosapio's husband, who happens to run in an outfit, a medical facility connected with the hospital, who will benefit from worker injuries.
Should I read this letter again? I can get you guys to get all that. Okay, anyone else wish to speak? Second time, anyone else wish to speak? Third and last time, anyone else else wish to speak? Okay, public hearing is closed. Okay, EDA before us, resolution two thousand and seventeen dash two oh four sponsoring an application for Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Minnesota Investment Fund grant, Wabash National LP. It's before us, what are your wishes?
We need to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions or comments? Questions or comments?
I got a question for Eric. This is an expansion, not a relocation, correct?
That's correct. We don't make this product anywhere else in the world. This is a new product for us and this is new jobs. We weren't, we located someplace else, it would be new, no matter where we live.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to throw a question.
Okay.
I'm assuming that if you have to modify and change these facilities, you're going to have to meet all the structure codes, including EPA guidelines, regulations, what have you, correct?
Yes, and we closely follow those. We have a department that's dedicated to that and all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, this resolution, would you call it off?
Gerby?
Yes.
Klenschman?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Ryanus?
Yes.
Carries.
Okay, next E, business subsidy, Wabash National LP, resolution two zero one seven dash zero five, whatever your wishes. And it's a motion to approve, two thousand and one seven dash zero five.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or comments?
I just want to reiterate, I included in the packet is a memo describing how the subsidy funds will work through our EDA. The EDA is authorized to levy a certain percentage of the taxable value of our community, of which we are levying to, I believe, nearly the max of that and generating a little over seventy thousand dollars a year. So rather than going through the formal tax abatement process, which is the property pays its taxes and then they're reimbursed at a later time, we're creating a specific amount from today that we're going to carry forward for the next ten years. So we're not going to go based on the valuation of the property, going up or down or anything in those lines. It will be a fixed amount from the amount of funds that we levy from that EDA. So it is, it is dollars that won't be new tax levy dollars that we're creating. Those funds are eligible to be used for this purpose. They are not being taken away from any other purpose that we have. We have significant other revolving loan dollars to help in other economic development processes that we engage in. So this is really something that's tax neutral to our residents, so it's, it's funds that we are already, already levying for. And this is an opportunity to arise to do this again, and we have these dollars there. I would recommend it to do this way.
Thank you, John. Also, I believe these similar subsidies is what helped keep Larson-Voltz alive for probably the past eight, ten years and kept a hundred and forty people employed. And besides that, I would like to thank, first of all, Wabash, and David Rauman for his work, but Carol Anderson from Community Development, and we had a group of people that have been at this, working hard at it, John and Lori, and I know I'm going to miss somebody as I go through the lineup, but with the county, there was Deb Law, there was Deb Bruber, the commissioners, Mike Wilson, Dwayne Johnson, RDFA Committee, which Mark is on. There was a lot of work put into this by some very dedicated people. So I thank all of you for that because we continue to hear, we need manufacturing in this community, and it doesn't just show up. And as we talked at the RDFA meeting, Larson's is gone. We got to move on, and if we didn't get Wabash to come in there, there's not a lot of businesses knocking on our door that would take a campus of that size and say, please let us in, we're interested in coming here. So without this, there's a good chance that that property would not only devalue but end up something like the Fennies Building or like David Drone said earlier, worse. So we're very fortunate to have this before us. Any other questions or comments? If not, Lori, would you call it off?
Klenschman?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Ryanus?
Yes.
Gerby?
Yes.
Carries.
Okay, business, sale of property, Kush Properties LLC. This will, will ask a recommendation to the city council. Lori, do you have?
Correct, we, the EDA had talked about this property probably last fall sometime. Lori Kush is ready to maybe move on the property now, so in closed session when we did negotiations, the EDA was in favor of selling the property for eighteen thousand dollars under the provision that she built on the property. Within two years, she got her architectural stuff done and now knows that her building will fit on that property, so she'd like to move forward with the purchase. So a recommendation from the EDA to the city council would be in order, and it is on the city council agenda tonight.
Key?
I make the motion. We approve the sale of the property, make the recommendation for the city council. I guess they approve about us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Maybe we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, motion carries. Hazard mitigation proposal, EMI abatement. Can you speak to that, Lori? John?
We, in the process with the JCPenney Building and taking over its ownership, we've had it inspected for hazardous materials and had a survey done for the cost of the abatement for that. Proposals were submitted to, or requests for proposals were submitted to a couple vendors. The only response was Michael Benia, Convenient Abatement Services. He put in a proposal for thirty-six, that cost thirty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. I would recommend we approve the, accept the proposal and request that he moves forward with the project. We have also applied for a redevelopment grant, of which these expenses are reimbursable, and those expenses are reimbursable for a period of time, even if we do not acquire the grant. We can go back and utilize this for this project or get reimbursed for these, these efforts in this project related to that grant if we are successful to receive it. I think it's in our best interest to take care of hazardous materials that we are aware of within that property before we make it available to any other redevelopment purpose. I think it's just the need that that needs to be addressed at this time. I think the cost of this proposal is fair, extremely fair, and I would, in the opportunity to get the work done now, makes it attractive as well.
Okay, I would maintain the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign, motion carries. Any other, Lori?
No.
I would maintain the motion, new turn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.